To order at six o'clock on the dot. So, welcome and do we have a need for an executive session?
We do indeed.
Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, woman. Mr. Mrs. Ms. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to convene into executive session to discuss a pending or imminent court action pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121. Dot 22 G3. The executive session should include the following: Council President, Council Members, Law Director, Mayor, Auditor, and Service Safety Director.
Second. We have a motion and a second for an executive session. We'll do a roll call vote. Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour, which is me, yes. So, we will adjourn for executive session.
Motion that we go back to the regular order of business, please.
Second.
So, I have a motion and a second to return to the regular order of business. Roll call vote, Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay, we are returning to the regular order of business. Thank you very much. We'll start with the resolutions that will be coming before council tonight. Starting with temporary resolution 41 dash 20. It is a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the general fund and to amend the certificate with the county auditor. This is actually to take care of a change in health insurance coverage for an employee of the law director's office, so they've had a change in circumstance. And this will help put that into effect. Any questions? Okay, Mrs. Bobbitt, will you be the second?
Yes, I will.
And we'll go three readings. Temporary resolution 42 dash 20, a resolution to authorize the service safety director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase of pipe and fittings for use by the Division of Water. I believe this is an annual piece, Mr. James, and we do it every year so that they have materials to work with.
Actually, it has to do with some of the upgrade to our infrastructure. It amounts to about 3,000 feet of pipe, a bowl, some of eight inch, and about 600 feet of six inch pipe and all the accommodating fittings. And at this time, for 2020, the Towneage Avenue from Lincoln to Reese, that water main will be replaced. On West Sixth Avenue from Hawking to Washington, that'll be replaced. On East Fair from Arbor Valley to Boyd, that'll be replaced. And on Pierce Avenue, River Valley Boulevard to Zimmer, will also be replaced. So, it's a good indication of what the city is doing to make sure our infrastructure stays improved and available.
Okay.
That'll be just two readings, by the way.
Okay, and I believe Mrs. Teener will be the second?
Yep.
Is that correct? Okay, any questions? All right, temporary resolution 43 dash 20, a resolution to decrease/increase appropriations in the public sites and open space fund. This is for work at Bowers Park, and I believe Mrs. Teener is going to cover this in the regular meeting, right?
Unless Service Safety Director Martin can cover that about the Bowers.
So, I was looking for Mr. Tharp, and I really would, I really am not prepared to make an announcement or discussion about that.
Okay.
So, it wasn't what I was thinking of, but I know what sites you're talking about.
Right, so if we could defer to the next, to the regular meeting, please.
And do you have a second on that?
Uh, yes, Mr. Matlin, please.
And I'm showing three readings, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Right, temporary resolution 44 dash 20, a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Parks and Recreation Fund and amend the certificate with the county auditor. This is to cover the cost of replacing the large mower, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, this, I can speak to this. It's 13 years old, more than 89,000 hours. The mower is used approximately 30 hours a week between 20 and 24 weeks per year. It's, you know, it's one of those nickel and diming things. The parks do use our equipment, so we would like to have, have one reading on this, suspend it tonight, and so they can get ready for the mowing season. And I'd like to have Mrs. Bobbitt be my second, please. Yes.
Any questions? Okay, moving on, temporary resolution 45 dash 20, a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Parks and Recreation Fund and amend the certificate with the county auditor. This is to allow for the current part-time fitness coordinator to move to a full-time coordinator, which will allow for weekend and evening hours at the facility known as Aldo.
Yes, so this is just as Holly says, we can have this three readings. We did not, and I did ask the question, it does not apparently have to go up on the city website as a job. They've decided who they wanted to hire, if I recall. So, it is not going up for people to apply for. And Mrs., Mr. Matlin, would you please second that? And this will be three readings.
Any questions? Okay, next one is temporary resolution 46 dash 20. This is a final resolution to enter into contract for the installation of a traffic signal at State Route 188 at the intersection with Delmont Road and the City of Lancaster's Mill Park Drive. It's to authorize Sir- Safe Service Safety Director to execute a contract for improving the described project. And this is the legislation for the traffic signal at State Route 188 in Delmont that we talked about at the last meeting. Do we have any other details? I know Mitch is not here tonight.
Do you want to go this time?
So, ODOT, as you know, so often we come in here and they want to move forward with the project, oh, by the way, we need some, a resolution from the city council. So, we, we're asking you to suspend this. This is funded by ODOT. There is, this is a good opportunity for us. It's outside of the city limits, actually, but they need, they need this resolution passed to give authorization for our port, part of what we're doing here in the city. But it's going to be at Mill Park and State Route 188, near where the Magna site is going to be. So, we would ask that you suspend a second or third reading, pass it tonight, so we can move this to ODOT as soon as possible.
Okay, and that's what I have.
Yep.
Did you have anything else?
Yeah, and if you recall, Mitch, last meeting, said he was trying to figure out why they were asking for $1,300. He did figure that out, so that $1,300 we don't have to pay for. That was for inspection services from ODOT, but they're taking care of that. So, this is just the moving forward with no cost to us, so do ask for suspension, and Mr. James can be my second, please.
All right. Next is temporary resolution 47 dash 20, a resolution to decrease and increase appropriations in the general fund engineering department. This is to correct the accounting error for an employee who retired and was actually paid out of the wrong account. I don't think there's anything else around that, so does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, Mrs. Bobbitt, will you be the second?
Yes, I will.
And we'll go three readings on that one. Next is temporary resolution 48 dash 20, a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the LDOT fund, increase receipt and amend the certificate with the county auditor. This is a resolution to appropriate and disperse additional proceeds received by LDOT. We will be suspending on this this evening, and Mr. Stotin, will you be the second?
Certainly.
Any questions on that? Next is temporary resolution 49 dash 20, a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the sanitation fund and amend the certificate with the county auditor. This resolution is actually to increase the budget to cover the cost of a retiring employee. Mrs. Teener?
Yes, I'll have Bill come up and speak to this, because we like having Bill at our meetings, so.
Is that open for a vote, or?
Hey! I make a motion, he comes to every meeting, it's me.
I don't think he wants you to vote on that either.
Timothy Kilbarger is retiring on March 18th. Last year, when I did the budget, I figured up all of his retirement money and everything, and the one thing I didn't do was figure any 2% raise that he was going to get at the end of the year. So, I'm $477 short on his retirement buyout, and I would just like to be able to do that.
He would be suspended on this evening, is ready?
If that's okay with you.
I have it down. And who's your second?
Mrs. Bobbitt? Yes.
Okay, that is all I have as far as resolutions and legislation. Do we have any departmental updates? Yes?
I did see Mike Tharp came in.
Do you want to go back to that?
Yes, we could.
Okay, Mr. Tharp, can you please come to the podium?
I covered, I covered two of them. It was the.
Bowers Park.
Decrease/increase appropriations. I covered the other two already. If you could explain the Bowers Park.
Uh, the public sites and open spaces. So, when we built the budget last fall, we built it in the contingency, $30,000. I guess I'd never worked with contingency line item before. That's kind of new for us, so I didn't know that to get that money out of contingency and up into an actual line we could actually use, you can only do, move 10% of that, or you have to come back to council to move whatever amount. So, now that we're getting ready to put the pieces in place to start Bowers Park, we need that money up someplace where we can actually fund that project.
And that is the park out off Wilson Road, out that area?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any questions for Mr. Tharp? Don't we have him?
Three readings, okay, still?
Yeah, that's fine.
Three readings, okay.
Yep.
I covered the other two, so we've got that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we'll go back to departmental updates. Mr. Mayor?
I have one, and you see Carrie Woody is back there, and she would never bring this up herself, but we learned today that Carrie will receive the Ohio Public Transit Association's Leonard Ronus Award at their annual meeting on April 22nd. It's the highest award that that organization gets, so Carrie has been president of that organization probably the last three years, so they're recognizing her contribution. So, congratulations, Carrie.
Congratulations, Carrie, that's awesome. Do we have any other departmental updates? Mr. Martin?
So, that was wonderful news. Let me tell you some bad news.
You're just full of joy tonight.
I know, I'm sorry. I don't have before you the, a resolution, I'll probably bring you before next council, I've talked to you before about the roof on the annex building. Just want to give an update on that and some changes. It was found that there is asbestos on there, so we're going to have to have a certain protocol we're going to follow on that. It's maybe not as extensive as I thought, but you know that we're allowed, we're required to follow a certain protocol and disposal, because we're going to remove the whole roof. In that, during that time, I talked to you last time, we have one of our units up on top of the roof, there's two up there, that actually takes care of the HVAC units that take care of the third floor. One of those have failed. They're almost $15,000 apiece. I've already, there's six units total for that building. We have already replaced three and rebuilt totally the fourth one, so these two up there, it would be about 6,000 to replace us to repair this other one. I'm going to recommend that we replace both of them, because we are required to get a crane. That's significant money to take them off the roof to repair the roof and then put them back up there. But, so I'm going to bring before you, when I have the numbers, we just had some bid openings last week, and we're evaluating those to see what our total cost will be. I would say the units with the crane is a separate issue than what we're doing with the roof. It's going to probably be close to about 30,000. I do have an accurate, pretty accurate bid on that, on the rental of the crane, lifting it down, and then putting it back up there the next day. I'm recommending to replace two. We absolutely have to replace one. I don't see any profit of putting $6,000 in a 17-year unit that usually has a life of 15 to 20, especially when I've already replaced three out of the six. Totally had to rebuild this other one, because it's a unique unit. And so, I'm recommending that we replace both at that time. So, I originally came to you, thought it might be about $180,000, 140 to 180,000. This is probably going to push us up to 200,000 or more. And so, we'll try to get that with you. I'm going to request that you pass it on first reading, because I'd like to engage in a contract and take advantage of the crews as they're poised, ready to go before they start doing larger roofs, schools, and things like that. We currently have some water leakage up there now, been working with it for several years, so just wanted to update you on that. That's not good news. It's another cost and expense that we have in the city, and I can't do anything about this. There's others that I'd like to be able to do, but of course, we have funding issues here in the city, and these are capital improvement projects, not only just repairs, but also improvements we made. We're trying to hold on as long as we can, but funding is our, is our problem.
So, just to go back, the two units plus the crane, you're thinking is going to be between 20 and 30,000 dollars more?
25 to 30,000 with the crane and the two units to replace them. That means taking them apart, installing with electrician and HVAC team up there. I've got a good quote on that. What I'm waiting for is, is my evaluation being submitted to me about the actual roof bid of that park. Sorry.
Okay. Well, thank you for letting us know. You're right, it's not good news. Do I have any more departmental updates tonight? Okay. Mr. Ull, do you have anything for tonight's meeting?
No, I do not.
Okay. Do we have any other items for finance? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned at 6:31.
The regular meeting of Lancaster City Council will begin at 6:35.
Almost everyone needs a car to get from point A to point B, and many families have two or more cars. At Carriage Company, located at 1031 North Memorial Drive in Lancaster, we specialize in hard-to-find used cars. We can help you find exactly what you're looking for.
Come into Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at CarriageCompany.com.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home and Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
There is no place like Lancaster, Ohio, and Fairfield County, and like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me, and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects through my volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio to put on Kids and Cops Day, to be a part of Shop With A Cop alongside the Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from, so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful and just as important that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at 740-654-2848 for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, ConnorInsuranceAgency.com.
Please rise and join me in a word of prayer. Father, we are thankful for this day and your many blessings. Once again, we thank you for this opportunity to be here, to go about this work you've called us to do. May you be with us and help us as we rightly go through and work through the business set before us tonight. May we do what is in the best interests of the city of Lancaster and its citizens. We ask for your continued help and guidance in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All members of council administration would ensure that you have your microphones turned on. I'll also just ask the, those in the crowd, we've had complaints from people in the crowd about cell phones going off throughout the meeting. If you'll please silence your cell phones as we move forward, we would appreciate that. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Downhour?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. James?
Here.
Mr. Matlin?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
Mr. Stotin?
Here.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes, here.
Sure? Okay. Let the record reflect that all nine members of Lancaster City Council are in attendance this evening, and may we just quickly welcome back the clerk. Thank you for, yes, glad to have you back. Reading and disposing of the journal.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated February 24th, 2020.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reports of city officials.
Excuse me. Email dated February 24th, 2020 regarding traffic study. City Engineer Office Review submitted by City Engineer Mitch Nolan. Email dated February 27th, 2020 regarding response to Lauren Peterson's email submitted by Mr. McDaniel. Email dated February 27th, 2020 regarding City of Lancaster CVVG Notice of Funding Availability FY 2020 submitted by Community Development Executive Director Linda Bergy. Email dated February 27th, 2020 regarding City Council Office 365 Recent Bill submitted by Service Safety Director Paul Martin. Email dated March 7th, 2020 regarding response to Timber Top Petition submitted by Mr. James. Email dated March 8th, 2020 regarding Joyce Harvey article submitted by Mayor David Scheffler. Email dated March 9th, 2020 regarding Finance Committee Meeting Agenda submitted by Mrs. Downhour. And finally, an email dated March 9th, 2020 regarding Safety Committee Meeting Date submitted by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any communications?
There are none to be presented.
Tonight, we do have a special presentation. We'll invite Superintendent John Picard to the podium. March is Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, and typically during this month, we invite someone from the Fairfield County Board of DD to come and update us on what they've got going on and to talk about their big events that is happening at the end of March. And so, Mr. Picard, we welcome you, and we'll turn things over.
Thank you, Mayor, very much, Dr. Ull, and thank you, City Council, Mayor, for having me again for, for another year. I will definitely keep it short, because I know your agenda is pretty packed, but as, as City Council President has said, that this is Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, and we've kicked off the first activity of that month on Saturday, actually, at River Valley Mall, which exceeded our expectations. It was a family community day. We weren't quite sure what was going to transpire with that. We weren't sure how many people were going to show up, and I know mall merchants had told us they were very pleased with the attendance, and it was a substantially higher attendance on a Saturday morning between, say, 10:00 in the morning and 2:00 in the afternoon than they typically see. I don't know if I've ever seen a line at Annie Annie's at 9:30 in the morning, but it was there, so I'm sure they probably would like us there every weekend. Fairfield County is still one of the fastest-growing counties in Ohio, and the statistics that we have continue to follow that trend. We continue to serve more and more individuals every year. We anticipate growth this year of another 100 people that potentially we're going to be providing supports to. We're up to about 1,400 people, as compared to roughly 20, almost 21 years ago when I came here, we were serving about 400 and their families, so it's a pretty significant increase. Nevertheless, we are performing with regards to our fiscal condition better than our projections that, that we anticipated. We are ahead of the game as far as where we expected to be, and we're very, 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 very pleased about that. Art &amp; Clay Square 7, which we acquired, I think it was a little over 10 years ago now, it's been, been quite some time that we've had that, and Square 7 Coffee House that followed it a few years later, in 2019, had another record year, both in terms of revenue and also individuals served, both individuals who are on the payroll, who are employees of Art &amp; Clay and Square 7, but also interns that are spending an internship learning the retail sector at that location. It has really truly become our, our front door to what Fairfield DD is all about, even though we try to keep a minimal presence. It's a place where you can go and not have any, any biases. We like to say it's a place that's indifferent to differences, and it's a, it's just kind of a very cool place to be, and there, there's exposure to all kinds of individuals and kids that are there. And I remember when we first acquired that business back a little more than 10 years ago, there was a, there was a man cave there, and there was a large flatscreen TV and some couches for the fathers to come and sit and watch games on ESPN while the mothers and the children were painting, paint your own pottery. We don't need that anymore, because the fathers are just as involved now as, as, as the kids and mothers, and it's, it's really a cool thing, because it's, it's truly one of those situations where if people ask what the business is at Art &amp; Clay, most people would say it's, it's paint your own pottery, and most people would say it's selling coffee and selling chocolate. We're not in that business. That, that's, that's the mechanism by which we get to our business. Our, our business is about selling memories. People come there because they're creating memories, they're creating a lifetime of memories that they can look back on 20 years later, and it's, and, and that's what's important, because it's, it helps with the vibrancy of family, and it helps with the vibrancy of the community. I can remember when we first acquired that business, and some people looked at us a little bit sideways, that there, there wasn't much in the way of business downtown at the time. It was kind of, kind of dead, and we just couldn't see what is arguably the prettiest building on Main Street fall empty. So, we said, sure, we're going to do this, and it has exceeded our expectations and created quite the return on investment for individuals that we support. It's been a pleasure this year, this past year, working with the mayor and Mike Pettit and other county officials. On the workforce center that's being developed on Coon Path Road, that was our former Opportunity Center, we got involved very early in that, and it's fairly rare that an organization like a county board of developmental disabilities wouldn't, wouldn't think at first blush that an organization like that would be involved in community development and economic development. But in fact, we were very, very pleased, because we're still part of the, part of the group that's, that's guiding that. Both of the universities, both Ohio University of Lancaster and Hawking College have committed to us that, in terms of their offering of workforce certificates, those, those jobs that require a certificate to do, they have committed to us that they will work with us to help make those certificate programs more accessible to folks that we support, if those folks were interested in entering into those fields of employment. So, we're very, very excited about that. We're very happy to have that building turn over to, to be used as, as the workforce center, and I think it's a, it's a perfect use for that building. As part of that movement, we currently have about 20 or 25 employees who are still working at that building, who are awaiting renovations that are being done currently on our Forest Rose School Campus. The, the southwest part of the building that was previously housed, previously housed New Horizons Mental Health Center, they vacated that. We are now renovating that to be used as a, a location where we can consolidate most of our individual support coordinators, and there are about 20, I said 20 or 25 employees who are currently working at the Opportunity Center in Greenfield Township. most of our individual support coordinators. And there are about 20, uh, I said 20 or 25 employees who are currently, uh, working at the opportunity center in, uh, Greenfield Township. They will be moving into the city of Lancaster, working probably sometime in June, uh, so we're kind of happy, they're not, but we're kind of happy to be able to, uh, provide a little bit of, uh, extra, uh, income tax revenue to the city by moving those folks back within the city limits. Um, they are asking if there's anything we can do about that, and I asked, said, you can call David Scheffler and work out a deal for yourself, because there's nothing I can do about the income tax, I'm sorry. So, uh, all in all, it's been a, been a wonderful year, and it's been, uh, I, I think I've probably said this every year, but, uh, Lancaster and Fairfield County are truly, uh, a special place to be, and, and I've been, uh, in January, I began my 48th year of providing services some way to folks with, uh, developmental disabilities. And I've been to a lot of different communities in Ohio, and I can tell you that we are unique. There's not a, if you, if you think that what happens in Fairfield County is replicated, you know, across the state of Ohio, it's, it's, it's more rare than it is common to see the kind of cooperation, the kind of partnership that occurs among organizations in this community. And, and it's really not about Fairfield DD, and it's not about the people who work for Fairfield DD, although I, I would not trade in the staff of our organization for, for anybody else. But it's truly about this community, and, and no matter what, again, our disagreements or our differences, we pull together and, uh, we, uh, we partner together where there's a problem. We don't point fingers and say, that's your problem, not mine. Um, and, and that's what makes us a special place, and, and, and ultimately, uh, home is where the heart is, and I'm certainly glad way back, a little more than 20 years ago, I made this my home. So, uh, thank you for inviting me back for another update. Don't know if you have any questions, but, uh, it's been a pleasure to be before you again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Picard. Would you, uh, quickly update us on the Celebration of Possibilities, its date, and what's happening with it this year?
Celebration of Possibilities, which I believe, and tell me, you're going to have to tell me, the 12th? Celebration of Possibilities?
No.
No, the, the, the number that we've done, this will be the 12th one. It will be on Thursday, March 26th, at, uh, Crossroads Center. Uh, get your tickets now. We have reduced the number of tables that we have this year, uh, for one primary reason. There, it was always pretty tight in there, and we usually had about 50 tables of eight, so there were, uh, my administrative assistant usually wind up selling more tables than that, so we had to squeeze a few more in. But, uh, roughly around 400 people, but it became difficult for those folks who were using assistive mobility devices to get around in a, in a place that tight, so we have, uh, eliminated, uh, roughly seven tables this year, uh, for accessibility purposes so that we have more interior accessibility and spreading the tables apart a little bit further, too. So, we're probably down about, uh, you know, between 50 and 60 tickets, but, uh, it's going to be a fun night, uh, it's Back to the Future. Um, there will be some fun Back to the Future, uh, references and, uh, things hanging out there, so if you want to see what's actually out there, and if you want to potentially test drive, uh, DeLorean, uh, get your tickets and show up.
Great, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Mayor?
I don't have a question, but I do have a proclamation, um, for Mr. Picard. Unfortunately, I left it laying on my desk, so...
Well, we know where he lives, so...
Congratulations on Developmental Disabilities Month, and I will get that to you, uh, probably tomorrow.
I appreciate that, sir.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor, for doing that. Anyone else have questions or comments? Well, thank you once again for being here and, uh, for the work that you and your team do here in Lancaster and Fairfield County. It is appreciated. Let's show, uh, Mr. Picard, our appreciation for him.
Thank you.
Very good. Are there any petitions or memorials this evening?
I've received three petitions on the same subject, which is the protesting of the proposed rezoning and annexation of Timbertop. The first included 50 signatures received on March 3rd. The second, uh, included 590 names, not signatures, received on March 6th, and the third included 18 signatures received on March 9th.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file petitions.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file petitions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. During this time of our meeting, we set the time aside to allow voters and taxpayers of Fairfield, of Lancaster, not Fairfield County, of Lancaster, to address Lancaster City Council on any item or issue you would like. If you'd like to address Lancaster City Council tonight, we invite you to come forward. Sign in at the podium with your name and address, and then state the same for the record. Please note that while we may choose to do so at a later time during this meeting, city council members will not respond to you during this time. In addition, we ask that you would, in accordance with the rules of city council, keep your comments to five minutes or less. Please note, we will be enforcing the five-minute rule once again tonight, so don't be surprised if your time runs over when you're, when you're made aware of that as we continue forward. With that, I see Ms. Probasco at the podium, so if you will, ma'am, please go ahead and begin your comments.
My name's Debbie Probasco. I live at 852 Second Street, and I'm here for a couple of different reasons tonight. Um, I'm here on behalf of the Lancaster Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association to extend all of you an invite to Kids and Cops Day, which will be happening, uh, May the 16th, I owe you well, from 10 to 2, rain or shine, and here's that invite. The other reason I'm here is, in our, uh, South End neighborhood, we have a new business starting up. Um, it is Itty Bitty Daycare, and there, Cassie is a friend of mine, and she's having an open house on Friday, March the 27th, from 3 to 6, there at the daycare, and she would like for me to extend that invite to you guys to her open house. The other thing I want to just touch on, um, service safety director, Paul Martin, I want to thank you and everyone else in the city for moving forward on the updates of the intersection at Broad and Hubert. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Probasco. We appreciate the information this evening. Is there anyone else you'd like to address Lancaster City Council tonight? Yes, ma'am, if you'll go ahead and begin your comments, and then just sign in afterward.
Um, my name is Anastasia Schonk, and I live on King Street, and I would like to speak to the council in support of single-family homes for the proposed Timbertop development. Um, I'd like to share just a few benefits and statistics of single-family housing for Lancaster, um, from a recent article from the City Journal of the Manhattan Institute, Institute for Policy Research. Um, since 2010, 80% of millennial population growth has been in the suburbs. Some of this is simply demographics. Most people with young children or contemplating the prospect of having children prefer single-family houses. Nearly three-quarters of millennials want single-family detached houses, according to a 2019 report on homebuyer preferences by the National Association of Home Builders. A 2018 apartment list survey found that 80% of millennials aspire to homeownership. Now, I focus on millennials because this should be your new focus for growth in Lancaster. This is a generation ready to pick where they want to stay and where they want to invest their future. We are seeing an increase for housing needs as this same generation has become more disenchanted with the hustle of crowded, bigger cities, I myself included. The journal states, "Since 2010, a net 1.8 million people have moved away from urban core counties of major metropolitan areas, largely to lower-density counties where single-family homes predominate." So, when they look for living in Lancaster, that is what they expect to find, single-family homes to grow with. The journal continues, "Single-family homes encourage people to have more kids. Indeed, this is an association between suburbia and fertility. Census Bureau data show that people living in high-density neighborhoods have fewer offspring and are less likely to become married. This is why targeting this market is so critical for Lancaster to thrive. We want people to feel confident enough in us and where they can live to raise their family. Getting married, having kids in this town, there's a real permanency there for us that could benefit Lancaster." Now, for this generation to feel confident enough to raise a family, they need to also feel financially stable. Besides the city of Lancaster having a healthy job market, a low income tax rate comparatively to the big cities we discussed previously that they have purposely moved away from, single-family housing proves to be more beneficial in the financial area as well. City Journal explains, "Without owning a home, younger people face major obstacles to boosting their net worth because property remains crucial to long-term financial security. Homes today account for roughly two-thirds of the wealth of middle-income Americans, and homeowners have a median net worth more than 85 times that of renters," according to the Census Bureau. So, in conclusion, councilmen, please vote no on rezoning for Timbertop for any commercial, multipurpose, or multifamily apartment plans. We need to encourage people who are seeking to put down roots in Lancaster rather than chasing after quick transient markets of multifamily and multipurpose buildings, buildings that have half the lifespan and see a faster rate of depreciation than single-family homes. Single-family homes are beautiful, and they would match the beauty of Timbertop in that area that is already residential, and give more homes for the next generation of Lancaster to grow, and in turn, sustain our amazing town. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schonk, for being here tonight and for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to address Lancaster City Council tonight?
You can pass it around, starting with the auditor there. Just hand it to the auditor, she'll send it around. You go ahead and begin your comments and sign in after, sir.
I already signed. Hi, my name's Eric Keener. I live at 721 Garfield Avenue, which is over on the west side. I'm here to give some support to our fire department and our police department in this city. You guys have one of the finest fire departments and police departments in the state of Ohio. Just this afternoon, I had a meeting with Assistant Chief Watts, the president of the firefighters' union, former councilman, Tim Welker, Randy Groff, and I had a meeting with Tina, Mrs. Teener, today also, to discuss about the income tax levy, which I do not support, absolutely not. Pass some information out. Now, these are numbers that I got from the mayor himself, and my question is, we're $7 million. This, he really seems like a bait and switch. This is not fair to the residents of this community. They support the fire department, they do support the police department, as I do, but we cannot support, as an income tax levy, that there's $3.3 million difference between this year's budget and next year's budget, and you're estimating a revenue of 10.3. That's $7 million. That's going to be in the general revenue and the general fund. What is that money going to? Now, I emailed the mayor, we've talked back and forth. When I finally asked that question, after he gave me those numbers, the communication stopped. So, that's my question to you and to the mayor, where is your $7 million at? That is not fair to the residents. That is a bait and switch, just like the street levy. The street levy passed, you put it in, and you took the money right out from the general fund that was used for the street levy before and put it to somewhere else. That's what people can't get behind. This is why it didn't pass the first time. People are not against the firemen or the policemen. They're great workers. I'm a fireman myself. I'm a fireman for the city of Columbus, and I worked very hard, and I chose this community to live here. But what I can't understand is why you guys keep on throwing out, we're going to lay firemen off. I'm tired of it. That's why I've been so vocal on Facebook about it. So, some of you have seen it, seen my post, and that's why Mr. Watts reached out to me today, and we had a very good meeting, and we all agreed, they need equipment, they need personnel, along with the police department. They need all that stuff that you're, they're needing, but what we couldn't agree on is for me to support it along with the other residents. They support them, but they don't support the income tax levy. You guys need to really get, buckle down. You're asking me to type my purse strings and give you money? You guys need to sit back down with the budget, and we did agree on that, and they said, right, they need to sit back down, too. You all need to sit down, whoever runs the budget, need to start trimming the fat. You're asking me to trim the fat off of my budget to give to you guys, to support them? I will always support them, as I told AJ today and to the union president, but what I cannot support is that, what you're doing to your firemen. It just seems like that's always the ploy, which is going to light the firemen off. That's what you, that's your fire department's known for across the state of Ohio, is, well, do you really want to go work for Lancaster? Because at some point, they're going to lay you off. You get to a certain point, get some seniority, you'll be safe, but you young boys, young women, you're rolling the dice, and that's what's happening again. That's not fair to them. You're messing with people's lives when it comes to that. I thank you. Have a good night.
Is there anyone else you'd like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. Kelly Prins, 2117 Lavender Street, part of the River Valley Highlands area, and of course, it's Timbertop. Up until, um, four years ago, I'd lived my 60-plus years in California. I'm here to tell you, y'all don't know what traffic really is. While I understand the traffic study and is, that it, you went through with it, page four projected the growth was used for the prior years of '15, '16, '17, and '18. Why weren't actual growth used for that study rather than what was projected during that time? Then on page eight, it talks about the grade F that we currently have on three different intersections, that we know, once the development is completed, it's just going to get worse. And so, and there's nothing going to be done with it except for one intersection adding a memorial. Then on page 10, there's, it goes on to explain that there'd be no change with the bill but increased daily times. I know Mitch isn't here, so that might be answered later on, and I understand that. Um, while I understand that the development and income go hand in hand, and we do need growth, I understand that, and most of the people here do, too, and it comes with additional income, but there's also going to be an additional cost. When you've got seizure-assisted living coming in, you're going to have more calls for EMS to come out, and if your service is already strained, they're going to continue being strained, and the costs are going to continue going up. Again, that's something you may have addressed before, but to think about that, where there's a cost, the income, there's going to be a cost. Brad Hutchinson was the original one that started this. I had no problem with his plans. They were decisive, he's community-minded, he even had a fire station incorporated in him to his project. Now, Lemon comes in, they seem very vague, there's nothing specific, and they completely wiped out the fire station. Knowing when an investor comes in and develops things, that can be a good thing, but if they aren't part of the community, how are they going to understand what our needs are? They're in it for the prop, uh, profit, which, okay, but there's also got to be a community involvement, and if you don't have that, then you're going to have serious problems when things go awry and they don't live up to the standards that Lancaster has. It's one of the reasons I'm here. Lancaster has beautiful standards and wonderful place to live. Um, one of the, um, comments that made a couple of months ago was, if you don't do anything about it here, Greenfield will do it. I've been to the Greenfield meetings, and the reason for the, one of the reasons for the annexation to Lancaster is because of the cost of the infrastructure. It is significantly less here in Lancaster than it is with Greenfield. So, if they were to go to Greenfield, it is going to cost them. And also, a plus maybe, this group of people that have been coming to your chambers now leave and go to Greenfield, something you may appreciate later on. Um, that was it, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else who'd like to address city council this evening?
Hi, uh, my name is Kim Anderson. I live at 1767 Cloverdale Drive in River Valley Highlands, and I'm here to address the Timbertop project again. Um, I just wanted to, um, address council and let you know personally that I have not, um, found any, um, any, um, any satisfactory information since the last council meeting, myself, um, in regards to the traffic or traffic studies or plans in regards to school and with the housing situation or fire or EMS or safety issues that were brought up at the last council meeting, any, uh, feedback or anything that I've received, um, from that, and I know many of my neighbors feel the same. Um, I understand that there needs to be growth and development, and the owner of the property has every right to do that. I am for growth and development of this community for sure. Um, I'm just asking my elected officials not to compromise, um, the basics, not to compromise the basic elements of this community, and, um, we don't want to compromise that because we don't want to, um, compromise, we want to improve the living experience of everyone here in Lancaster, and if we don't focus on those basics, we're not going to improve the living experience of everyone here in Lancaster. And I can tell you, for people living on that end of town already, um, it's, it's not a good experience already, and so if we continue to congest that over there, it's just going to get worse and worse. And so, um, I would, um, ask my elected officials to listen to that and please support us over there. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Anderson. Is there anyone else who'd like to address city council this evening?
Good evening. My name is Diane Wogan-Burnside, and I reside on Clover Meadows in River Valley Highlands, in the city of Lancaster. However, I'm going to be speaking to the income tax. Is this straightforward? This says, vote for this Lancaster safety levy. This says, "Vote for this Lancaster safety levy." I support the fire and the police, however, I do not support the tactic that's being used with this levy, and I do not support the lack of transparency. The Lancaster City income tax increase on the March ballot, while the city administration is saying the income tax is to fund fire and police, which it may, the city will then take the money in the general fund, which has always been funded for police and fire, and redirect it to other departments and/or projects of the administration or mayor's choice. Passing the levy does not mean that the police and fire will necessarily get any additional funding. It's just a remarketing of the levy that failed last November. Some are calling it a bait and switch. It's the same tactic that was used years ago. Street repairs were funded from the general fund. Once the street levy passed, the streets no longer received any money from the fund. So, how are the streets in Lancaster to drive on? What's your street look like? Bottom line, the March levy is the same levy that failed last November. Dollars will be used the same as they have been used last November. It's just a shell game. As to where the dollars will come from, general fund dollars that were marked for fire and police, now you see it, now you don't. I'm somewhat surprised that no one comments on the suggestions made by the mayor's financial advisory committee. These were local, respected professionals who reside in Lancaster. They were CPAs, treasurers, attorneys, who were handpicked by the mayor, gave of their time for several months, meeting with the city departments, meeting weekly, to review the city's needs, expenses, revenues, et cetera. And yet, the mayor saw fit to almost double their highest suggestion, and when asked, the mayor simply responded, "Because they didn't give me enough money." The mayor's financial committee suggested the following options: eliminate 1% commuter tax credit, 0.1% income tax increase, 2 mil increase property tax only, 2 mil property tax plus 1%, 3 mil property tax plus 1%, 0.25 income tax increase, a two-year pay freeze in 2022 and '23. The city administration, along with city council finance committee, decided on legislation that would be a 0.45 increase from the current 1.75 to 2.0, beginning January 1, 2020, in the levy offered in November. In reviewing the documentation of this temporary ordinance, please advise how the math works and the intent of the verbiage. Tax rate of 2.2 for the taxable years that began on or after January 1, 2021. Allegation of funds. Funds for municipal park and recreational activities is 0.15. For the purpose of operating, maintaining, repairing, and providing capital facilities for fire and police department of the city, does this verbiage mean employee salaries? 0.45%. Purpose of providing fire services within the city and acquiring for such services and paying principal and interest on securities issued and the public obligations incurred to finance such equipment, is this not included in your levy request funds? And the remaining total of the imposed tax at a rate of 1.45%. General fund, 1.41. Parks improvement, 0.01. Cemetery funds, 0.01. City capital improvement fund, 0.01. I have tried many different calculations, and based on this allocation, I come up with 3.65. Shouldn't the total be 2.2? What am I missing? Tactics like this destroy trust and credibility in the public side. So, I have to say, "Thank you."
Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else who'd like to address City Council this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you very much.
My name is Connie Gurken, and I live at 2214 Landcrest Drive. And I changed my mind, Tom. I did decide to say something.
Welcome.
At a minimum, I would ask that you delay your vote on March 23 regarding Timbertop. I'm hoping all of you will keep looking at the big picture on the Timbertop proposals. It does affect almost everyone in our Lancaster area, not just the Second Ward. Second Ward may be affected with specifics issues relative to the locations, such as water, traffic, current school overflow, and reduction of property values, which we've already addressed previously in meetings. However, the main issue, in addition to all these, is the fact that this is not a location suited for this type of development. No matter how many, how much you try to argue to the contrary, this is a residential area, more suited for single-family zoning, and I didn't know you were going to address that, rather than all the different types of zoning. Many of us, although we would like it to stay the way it is, we're not opposed to development, just not the type being proposed, whatever that turns out to be. Lancaster has so much to offer, and no one is more passionate about all of our wonderful amenities than I am. As a realtor, I've assisted buyers and sellers in the area for over 41 years. I love showing off our city, because it's a great place to live. Please do not destroy the character of our city by allowing the different types of zoning being proposed. I am sure that will cause people to say, "How did that happen?" It is a residential neighborhood, no matter the arguments, no matter the arguments to the contrary. Please vote no for the annexation, if you are going to plan to vote for the zoning proposals also. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address City Council this evening?
My name's Robert Huffman, 1580 Woodland Heights Lane, Northwest. Many people have spoken. It's been continued, not just in this session, but the other open sessions, about the plans for the neighborhood. Over and over, it continues to be brought up, that, you know, we're not against the development that's proposed, but we are against what we don't know, and we are against the commercial development of that property. We are a neighborhood. You know, you look down where we are, and we are single-family homes. This is why we're living there. This is what makes that part of Lancaster unique for us and ideal for us to live there. As part of this proposal is a commercial portion. That will drastically change the flavor of our neighborhood. We will see commercial buildings go in. That will start that commercial creep all the way down Columbus Street, I'm afraid. Would you want commercial buildings to be put next to your house? Would you want commercial development to be put in front of your house? What do you think the impact would be upon you? Because that's what we are concerned with, and that is what we're facing right now. Second, we've talked about the zoning unknowns, or the building development unknowns with this. We still continue, month after month now, we're on five months now, and the development still is not tied down. There are a few pieces that they know they're going to do. They are still waiting to find developers to do other portions of that, and yet, we're thinking about going ahead and granting them zoning to do whatever. Once that zoning's done, there's no pulling it back. We ask for you to say, "No, we cannot, in all right mind, go and give you the zoning developer lemon that you want, because we don't understand what's going to be there. We have to watch out for the best of not only Lancaster, but also the residents that are directly there and will be impacted by this." I ask you to decline their current zoning. Allow the annexed property to come in and bring the existing zoning, and then, as they define portions of that property, they can ask for zoning specifically on those portions. Or if they come with a more overall development plan with developers that will be doing the work, so that you really know what they're saying is going to be done, then provide an overall zoning for that location. Finally, I have to disagree a little bit about the Second Ward. This will, this development will affect all of Lancaster and thus, it's important to everyone in Lancaster, but it's really the Second Ward that is going to be affected by whatever happens there. Everyone else doesn't have to live with this as their neighbor. Everyone else doesn't have the home values of their property possibly declining as commercial expands, if commercial is granted. So, please understand that and give weight to what we overwhelmingly, the Second Ward residents, are coming and asking, which is not to approve the zoning as it's zoned currently. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huffman, for being here. Is there anybody else who'd like to address Lancaster City Council this evening?
Yes, hello. My name's George Burnside. I live at 1688 Clover Meadows Drive, Lancaster High, 43130. And I ain't got a whole lot to say, but I'm just going to ask about the income tax thing at 0.45. Well, here's my idea. Stop trying to rustle wool over people's head and just say, "Hey, wait a minute. Let's do this different. Let's take this income tax increase, and let's start a new fund for the police and fire only, and take whatever's in the general fund that get paid from right now, here on out, keeps coming into them, plus they get the 0.45. You might get this thing passed, but I don't see any other way. You'll get this passed. So, all I can say is, "Good luck." Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else who'd like to address Lancaster City Council? Well, thank you for being here tonight. Are there reports of standing committees?
There is one. Finance committee meeting minutes for February 24, 2020, submitted by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there reports of special committees?
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of Temporary Resolution 32-20.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the general fund 101 and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mr. Stoughton.
Ms. Downhour.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Resolution Temporarily Number 32-20.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 32-20. Discussion, Ms. Downhour?
Just that this resolution is to pay for a sick leave buyout that was not originally in the book.
Thank you very much. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 32-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 34-20.
A resolution to authorize the purchase of two replacement vehicles from the state, term contract for use by transit, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mr. James.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 34-20.
Discussion, Mr. Schoonover?
This is an annual piece, along with the next four pieces we're going to discuss, for public transit. This is their replacement of aging vehicles to new ones, under their state contract and with their state and federal grant funds.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 34-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 35-20.
A resolution authorizing the city of Lancaster to apply for the Meals on Wheels older adult alternatives of Fairfield County, Inc., 2020 through 2021, grant, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 35-20.
Discussion, Mr. Schoonover?
No, sir.
Any discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 35-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 36-20.
A resolution authorizing the city of Lancaster to apply for the Meals on Wheels older adult alternatives of Fairfield County, Inc., 2020 through 2021, grant, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mr. James.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 36-20.
Discussion, Mr. Schoonover?
No, sir.
Any discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 36-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 37-20.
A resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, FTA, as authorized under the federal transit laws, as codified 49 U.S.C., Section 5311, financial assistance for other-than-urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, 5339 and 5339B, and any other grants that become available through ODOT and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon each grant application approval, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 37-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 37-20. Discussion, Mr. Schoonover?
Yes, this piece gives transit the ability to apply for all the federal state grants that they currently apply and receive, so this is the bulk of what transit operates on, so this is an annual piece they do every year to keep transit running.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Schoonover. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 37-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 37-20.
A resolution approving a transit safety point system, cell phone, personal electronic devices, and onboard video monitoring pursuant to the contract with the Ohio Transit Risk Pool, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mr. James.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 38-20.
Discussion, Mr. Schoonover?
No, thank you.
Other discussion, Ms. Teener?
Yes, I have a question. So, this money, whatever, this is from grants, everything tonight is from paid out of grants?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Teener. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Ms. Downhour?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Resolution Temporarily Number 39-20.[1746.91]
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Ms. Downhour?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, resolution temporarily numbered 39-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 39-20. Ms. Downhour?
Yes, this resolution is mainly due to an increase in the cost of newspaper publications for the city planning commission, and we are asking for an additional $500 to cover that expense.
Thank you very much, Ms. Downhour. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 39-20 passes nine to zero. We now have first reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with temporary resolution 41-20.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the general fund 101 and amend the certificate with the county auditor, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mrs. Downhour.
First of three readings, please.
First reading on temporary resolution 41-20. Temporary resolution 42-20.
A resolution to authorize the service safety director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase of pipe and fittings for use by the Division of Water, offered by Mr. James, second by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. James?
This resolution actually will help purchase about 3,000 feet of 8-inch pipe, 600 feet of 6-inch pipe, and the various necessary fittings to go along with them. This actually will help upgrade our water distribution system from the Taumeege Avenue from Lincoln to Reese, on West Six, from Hawkington to Washington, from Hawking to Washington, and East Fair, from River Valley to Boyd, and Pierce Avenue, from River Valley Boulevard to Zimmer.
Thank you very much, and your pleasure?
Two readings.
Two readings. First of two readings on temporary resolution 42-20. Temporary resolution 43-20.
A resolution to decrease increase appropriations in the public sites and open space fund 231, offered by Mrs. Teener, second by Mr. Matlin.
Mrs. Teener?
First of three readings, please.
First three readings on temporary resolution 43-20. Temporary resolution 44-20.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Parks and Recreation Fund 212 and amend the certificate with the county auditor, offered by Mrs. Teener, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mrs. Teener?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of resolution, temporary resolution 44-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading. Temporary resolution 44-20. Ms. Teener? Any discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Ms. Teener?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 44-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 44-20. Ms. Teener?
Yes, there's a mower in the Parks Department, 13 years old. It's many, many hours, kind of nickel and dime in them because it works 20 to 24 weeks out of the year, they're mowing, and they just need to have a replacement.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Mr. Stotin?
Normally, these things we pass on talk about being bought off state contract. I don't see any reference to that. Where are we buying this? How are we buying this?
I think we're looking to someone in the administration to provide some answer. Is the, Mr. Tharp still here?
I'm going to say it's bought off a state contract, but I wouldn't, you know, I mean, that's how we do. I'm not going to vote for it unless I know that it is, so. Better find out pretty quickly.
And I believe Mike left.
It looks like that is the case. We are on the motion to pass here, so.
I will not be supportive.
Yes, Ms. Bobbitt?
Did, he sent us an email. Was that in the email?
I don't recall that being in there.
Does anybody have his email that he sent all of counsel?
I would think that if we're buying something on suspension, the person that wants it should be here to discuss it.
I don't think he said where he was getting it.
So, auditor nettles, aren't we required to purchase via that process? If we were to purchase a $72,000 item, aren't we required to use state bid process in order to purchase an item like this?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
There's a... Actually have a quote here in my stuff. Just the amount, bigger vehicle system.
We did all receive an email, and he had shown up late, and I don't see him here now, so I won't vote to pass since he's not here today.
Could you table it tonight?
Don't have to table it, you just read it. First reading.
Yeah, we can just call first reading and move ahead.
Oh, okay, yeah, first reading.
Three readings.
Okay, so this will be first reading then on temporary resolution 44-20.
Do you need to withdraw the motion?
I don't think we have to, even though we moved to suspend. We don't have to suspend, though we have the ability to do so, and so I think we'll be able to.
She already made a motion to pass?
She did make a motion to pass. Yeah, you should probably withdraw your motion to pass.
So, Mr. President, I withdraw my motion to pass.
And then who's the second on this?
Temporary resolution 44-20.
Ms. Bobbitt?
And second.
We have a motion and a second to withdraw the motion here that is on the floor. Mr. Law Director, are we doing this the right way?
That is fine, yep.
Okay. Mr. Tharp is responding here via text that yes, indeed, this is being purchased off the state contract. So, we still want to put it on as first reading?
He's not here.
He's not here.
This is first of three readings.
First of three readings. We need to vote on the motion to withdraw. Please call the roll on the motion to withdraw.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion withdrawal has passed nine to zero. Ms. Teener, what's your pleasure here?
First of three readings.
First reading then on temporary resolution 44-20, and we might just ask the administration to pass along the request that, should there be a request to suspend, we may have questions as we go through the process, and if the person who can answer those questions was here, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Drew, President, if I might add?
Yes, Mr. Stotin.
As long as it's in the legislation that it actually says it's purchased off state contract, that's very clear to me. So, without knowing that for certain, then that's my concern. You know, you all know me well enough.
Yes. And that's a valid concern, and I think the flip side of that too is that anyone could have had any number of questions, not just that, even if it were stated. And so, having someone here that can speak to the legislation should we need it is not, especially on suspension like this, can be helpful. Very good. All right, let's move ahead then. Temporary resolution 45-20.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Parks and Recreation Fund 212 and amend the certificate with the county auditor, offered by Mrs. Teener, second by Mr. Matlin.
Mrs. Teener?
First of three readings, please.
First reading on temporary resolution 45-20. Temporary resolution 46-20.
A final resolution to enter into a contract for the installation of a traffic signal at State Route 188 at the intersection with Delmont Road and the city of Lancaster's Mill Drive for PID number 111072, and to authorize the service safety director to execute a contract for approving the described project, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mr. James.
Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of temporary resolution 46-20.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution 46-20. Mr. Schoonover?
Nothing at this time.
Any discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 46-20.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 46-20. Discussion, Mr. Schoonover?
Yeah, we asked for suspension on this piece because we have our ducks in a row on this one. We discussed it during finance, and we discussed it, we discussed it two weeks ago. The only thing that we weren't sure of is Mitch Nolan was trying to figure out why we were needing $1,300 from the, to the state. That was resolved. We don't have to pay that. This is for the, to go out to bid with the state for the contract on putting a light on 188 out there at Mill Park Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Schoonover. Is there further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 46-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 47-20.
A resolution to decrease increase appropriations in the general fund 101 engine hearing department, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mrs. Downhour.
First of three readings, please.
First reading on temporary resolution 47-20. Yes, you're right, we're good. Temporary resolution 48-20.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the LDOT Fund 208, increase receipts, and amend the certificate, other sources and appropriations with the county auditor, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mr. Stotin.
Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of resolution temporarily numbered 48-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross, suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution 48-20. Discussion on the motion to suspend, Ms. Downhour?
No.
Any discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mrs. Downhour?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record resolution temporarily numbered forty-eight dash twenty.
Second.
We have a motion to second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution forty-eight dash twenty. Further discussion, Mrs. Downhour?
Just that this resolution is for additional proceeds that were received by L.DOT, and they need to be appropriated and disbursed, and that is why we are doing it in one meeting.
Thank you very much. Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution forty-eight dash twenty passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution forty-nine dash twenty.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the sanitation fund six oh five and amend the certificate with the county auditor offered by Mrs. Teener, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Ms. Teener?
Yes, um, our sanitation, I don't think Bill's here, um, but, uh, he had a little discrepancy and somebody was retiring, and he needed to appropriate for five hundred dollars into their retirement fund, so, Bill's fault.
Yes.
What's your pleasure?
Oh, suspension. Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend the rules and wait the second and third reading of temporary resolution forty-nine twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and wait the second and third reading of temporary resolution forty-nine dash twenty. Further discussion, Ms. Teener?
No, I just explained.
Very good. Any discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Ms. Teener?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution forty-nine twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution forty-nine dash twenty. Further discussion, Ms. Teener? Discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution forty-nine dash twenty passes nine to zero. Are there any other resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, we'll move to the reading of ordinances, beginning with the second reading of temporary ordinance four dash twenty.
An ordinance amending the zoning map for the eighteen point nine three nine acre property between North Memorial Drive and North Columbus Street Nelson Road, parcel number zero five three two one five two four zero zero, zero five three two one five two six zero zero, zero five three two one four four nine zero zero, and zero five three two one four five zero zero zero, offered by Mr. McDaniel, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. McDaniel?
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance four dash twenty. Temporary ordinance five dash twenty.
A resolution amending the zoning map for the twenty-one acre property consisting of three parcels located along Campground Road, including the existing residence addressed fourteen forty-three Campground Road, parcel numbers zero five three one zero zero four one zero zero, zero five three one zero zero four three zero zero, and zero five three one zero zero four one one zero, offered by Mr. McDaniel, second by Mr. Stoughton.
Mr. McDaniel?
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance five dash twenty. I'll just note that for both temporary ordinance four and five dash twenty, we will have a public hearing has been set for April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, at six thirty here in council chambers. We have no ordinances up for first reading. Are there any other ordinances that come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, we'll move to tabled legislation. Is there any action on tabled legislation this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Mr. Hall?
Just real quickly, um, and I don't want to take a lot of time on this, but, um, over the span of the last couple of, um, council meetings, we convened or created a complete count committee, um, and that committee met last week, um, and the president's sending around maps that sort of, um, provide you with some examples of why this committee is important. The first map, um, is, um, a map of census tracts, uh, for the entire county. You'll see that there are, uh, four census tracts in dark blue. Uh, those are, uh, census tracts that are the, uh, at greatest risk of not having, um, a complete response or a, or reasonable response. And three of those four census tracts are in the city of Lancaster. In our meeting last week, we had a representative of the Census Bureau, um, who did a, a pretty, uh, compelling job of letting us know why the complete count is important. There is significant money at stake here, uh, so we have some work to do to make sure that Lancaster does a good job. The second map, on the backside, um, is again a map of census tracts, um, with our city wards superimposed, so you can see which of the wards, um, have the greatest degree of risk in terms of, of not having a complete count. And what you see here is that the fifth ward, the sixth ward, and to some extent the second ward have some degree of exposure, um, in, in terms of complete, uh, complete count. So, um, we want to focus some attention in those areas. I would like, uh, to maybe defer to Lynda Burge, who is, um, spending a fair amount of time working on this particular committee and maybe the mayor to make, uh, some additional comments.
Thank you very much. Ms. Burge, if you'll come, and in the meantime, um, Mr. Hall, is she, is she going to talk about what you're going to do in order to get some of this response?
I think she has, she's going to say a few words about that, and then I think the mayor may have a comment or two.
Great, very good, Ms. Burge.
Uh, thank you. So, uh, I was impressed upon us that our census count coming up is going to determine federal dollars that come to Lancaster, and that will, um, directly impact, uh, our CDBG money, uh, funds that come in for the schools. And typically, people who don't respond to the census are people with low incomes. Children, zero to five, tend to not get counted, veterans, seniors, um, these are the people that this money is meant to help. So, it's a great committee. I want to hear from also, um, Mrs. Teener, she's on the committee, and mayor was at the, was at the committee meeting. We had good representation. We have an opportunity to apply for a grant from the National League of Cities. They're really wanting to get money out to help communities do census count parties. You know, we want to do them in, in all the wards, but especially the wards where we are, um, concerned about the count, and really involving the community, um, getting the schools involved. We're talking about getting the schools involved. Anyone having to do with people with low incomes, children zero to five, senior citizens, veterans, um, anyone having to do with these groups to get them involved. So, we, we only have the summer, and we really need to get going now. The census will start, um, you can respond to the census, uh, what'd they say, in seven days? So, and that was on Thursday, so...
This week.
This week.
Wednesday, I think.
This Wednesday.
This Wednesday.
So, yeah, we have another, the committee is going, going to meet again, uh, this Thursday.
So, the census begins this Wednesday, where you can respond, and how long will it run for, do you know?
Uh, they don't have an exact cutoff date, and they're really wanting to, everyone to respond by September first.
Okay.
Um, and that, they, they have it in stages, so everyone will get, uh, you know, there's a mailing going out, there's, you know, emails going out, the city is sending it out in, um, sending notices out in everyone's wa, uh, utility bills, right? The water bills?
Yes.
Um, and then, once they get to a stage where if they haven't heard from someone, they sort of narrow it down and are really, then they send people out to your house, right? So, if you haven't responded, that's when people will start going door to door. So, the census, they, it really sounds like the Census Bureau is, um, you know, well-staffed and, and really has a, um, targeted effort at getting everyone counted. And then, it's our responsibility to do our part, is our, you know, from our community, to get folks to come out and to be counted. And everything is very, um, their privacy rules are, um, just, you know, everything is, the, the data that they collect, they cannot use. It cannot be used by any other, by anyone.
Secure.
Very secure.
For seventy-two years.
For seventy-two years. So, if anyone's worried about their data being shared, or in some way their privacy being, um, you know, compromised, um, the Census Bureau is really trying to, uh, address that.
Very good, thank you. Are there questions around the table for anyone on the committee tonight? Yes, Ms. Downhour?
Is it accurate in saying that the response to the census is now online?
Yes.
It is not a piece of paper that they circle in something any longer. So, it is all online, and I'm assuming that the committee is going to have some type of...
There is a paper option, and there will be census, um, workers that...
Were sure about that?
We, we are sure about that, but, um, you know, because some people aren't online.
And that was going to be my point, because we were told at four one one, it was all online. It was, there was not going to be a paper option.
Well, it is online, um, but for those pe, in those areas or in those homes where there isn't a response, there will be people knocking on your door.
Okay, I didn't know if they were going to go around tablets and have them completed at the time.
We're trying to get some places, maybe we could have a station where people can come in and do it, you know, have a location that they can come in and do it, and, and so...
Or take iPads with you.
Yeah.
Very good. Further questions? Ms. Bobbitt?
That was my question.
That was the question. So, what I hear you saying is there's an online option that's preferred, and then if you don't respond to that, you may get a mailing, a paper, and if you don't do that, someone's going to come give you a little visit.
That's right.
Okay.
And there is funding at stake. And, and by the way, just real quickly, uh, Councilman Teener, uh, was superb, uh, the mayor was there. We also have a few other people in the audience that contributed. Uh, David McCoy is going to help us with the press release. He's a former, um, newspaper guy. Janet Morald is doing a magnificent job of making sure it's covered in social media. So, we, we do have a head of steam, there's a lot of good work that's underway, but there is a lot at stake, and we need to make sure that we do have, uh, as complete account as we can get.
Very good. Well, thank you to those of you who are on the committee and the audience tonight. We appreciate your work, and let me also just ask, I'm under the impression that Ohio is at risk for losing, uh, a, a congressman if the account doesn't come out the way we need it to. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
And so, it's not just our local dollars that are at stake here, but we may lose a representative as well in the Congress if we, if we don't get this done the right way. Very good. Further, yes, I'll come back to you, Ms. Teener, after we go to the mayor.
Yeah, just, uh, quickly, we're, instead of, to comment, uh, there is something around seven to eight hundred billion dollars that's allocated in the country strictly on census and population. So, the more people we count, the more accurately we count, uh, determines whether we get the right amount of money that we're supposed to get or we're entitled to. I was also going to mention the loss of a congressional seat, which is definitely in play, so we need to get everyone counted. That's why it's called the Complete Count Committee.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Is your microphone on there?
Yep.
I was having a hard time hearing. Okay, very good. Ms. Teener?
So, uh, you can go online census twenty twenty, and there's also, if there's a drop down, there's job opportunities. And if you do that, uh, it doesn't, there's all, there's like field worker, there's clerk, I mean, there's all kinds of things. It also does not, uh, since it is a, um, temporary position, it isn't supposed to mess with things like benefits, social security, things like that, that he'd said, because you won't be working a lot of hours. I didn't think the pay was very bad. You have to look on and see what it is, but it'd be great for college students this summer, you know?
Seventeen dollars an hour is my recommendation.
Seventeen, yeah. But it, you know, it, it'd be a great thing for college students this summer if they're home and quit buzzing mom and dad all the time, and they can have their money.
Very good. Further questions or comments on this issue in particular? Well, Mr. Hall, Ms. Teener, and Ms. Burge, thank you all, and thank you again to those in the audience that are members of this committee. We appreciate your work in making this happen and for helping to move it forward. Is there other unfinished business this evening that anyone would like to address? Mr. Mayor?
When would you like us to address the comments from the audience in the public comment section?
Um, if it was, if it has to do with business we've already talked about previously, I think we can do it right now.
Okay, so I would like to address taxation increase, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
So, first of all, I'd like to address Ms. Burnside and her comments. She failed to mention that the finance, uh, Special Finance Advisory Committee, their recommendation of a point two-five percent increase was just to keep the city from running out of cash and defaulting on our bonds. It didn't include anything extra. It was just to keep us from going into default. And, uh, so, here's the situation this year. Budget cuts. We reduced the police department, uh, force by three. We cut line item for training supplies, and we eliminated vehicle replacements, which are pretty critical. We reduced service to lockout assistance, no more lockout assistance unless a child is involved. Park, routine parking enforcement has been eliminated. We've limited the color guard to only the July fourth and the holiday parades. We are eliminating one detective position, and that detective will be put back on the street force, and we've eliminated the citizens' police academy. Fire budget, we've reduced, again, reduction in force of three, we've cut numerous, numerous line items. General government, no pay increases. Our union employees, uh, the, uh, fire and police department members, our union employees, and they had contracted increases which were legally bound to pay. Fire and police got their raises. Any general government employees did not get raises. We increased the employee health insurance contribution, and we had numerous line item cuts. We are facing a big problem, and we are addressing it, and if we don't pass this thing this year, there will be additional cuts, um, to remain subject to, um, how much we need to cut. So, the departments that didn't get pay raises are the certified building department, engineering code enforcement, law director and prosecutor, municipal court judicial division, tree commission, income tax auditor, treasurer, human resources, safety, safety services director, mayor, city council, all of our commissions, and the city hall and annex facilities. Now, Mr. Teener. Mr. Teener made some interesting accusations, bait and switch, fuzzy math, et cetera. He provided a paper with some analysis that, uh, I have no idea where the numbers come from. The math is pretty simple, and I'm going to...
Sir, you're out of order. You'll be removed if you don't, if you don't maintain order. Mr. Mayor?
This is the simple math. Two thousand nineteen, the budget for police and fire was nineteen million two hundred thousand dollars. We have, of a one point seven five percent income tax, point six percent of that is dedicated to safety forces. That raises seventeen, seven point two million dollars a year. Again, nineteen million two is our safety forces budget. The safety forces levy that is on the current one point seven five percent tax raise is seven point two million dollars. With the planned additions in safety forces, which I will go over here, so we plan to restore the cuts that we made in the, in the twenty twenty budget, that's six hundred thousand dollars. We plan to add a four-staff medic, which takes twelve firefighters and medics full-time, supplies and equipment, one point three million dollars annually. Add a directed patrol unit, which is four police officers, three officers and a sergeant, plus supplies and equipment, eight hundred thousand dollars a year. And the police department headquarters needs a new boiler, that's a one-time fee of a hundred thousand dollars. So, again, nineteen, uh, point two million dollars for twenty twenty, the safety forces levy raises seven point two. If this point four five percent passes, it will raise an additional five million dollars is what we estimate, up to twelve point two million dollars. If we implement these additional safety forces that we have mentioned and plan to do, that would raise the safety forces budget to twenty twenty-one, in twenty twenty-one, to twenty-two million five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, we will raise twelve point two million dollars from safety forces levy, and their budget will be twenty-two point five five million. That's pretty simple math. I don't know what part of the five million dollars isn't going to the safety forces if their budget is twenty, over twenty-two million dollars, and we're only raising ten point two million in safety forces levels.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Is there any questions or comments surrounding this issue around the table? Yes, Mr. James?
The comment I would have is, I spoke with a neighbor who is on the police force this afternoon, and asked him if he supported it, and he wholeheartedly does. I represent the second ward, and I'm somewhat selfish in this, uh, in this request. Maybe I don't want to reveal this, but at any one point in time, everyone I've asked how many, how many officers we have on, on, in a patrol car at any one point in time, and every answer I got was a whole lot more than we have. It's only six. And when we had the situation over on, um, Pierce Avenue with a hostage situation, every one of our safety forces was there, and in some cases, they brought some more in. So, I fully support this and will continue to do so as best I can, and I think anything, once again, the second ward, we have a lot to gain for this. We have no firehouse in the second ward. We need more EMS people. That, just to bring on one more shift includes sixteen more EMS people. And over the last few years, our population is aging, and we've had to use more EMS services than we've ever had before, and our population will continue to age unfortunately for a while until the millennials take over. So, I intend to support it, and I don't mean to be intense about it, but I think it's time we stood up for what we believed in and supported it. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. James. Yes, Ms. Teener?
Have a, just have a question, Mayor. I, I just want to ask this. Um, so, the monies that they're getting right now, the general fund, okay?
I'm just taking...
The money, I'm so sorry. Can you hear me?
I think so.
Okay. So, the money they're getting right now out of the general fund, as we stand today, if the levy passes, because I just want to make it clear, and they'll get the money from the passage of the levy?
Right.
Right? So, is the money that stands today that they are getting right now, they will also get that money too? Or will that stay in the general fund?
Right now, safety forces get twelve million dollars from the general fund. If the levy passes and we get an additional five million dollars, that will drop to ten million something that they get from the general fund. But we have been taking from the general fund, all those departments I read, for many years. We have cut force, we have cut expenses, we have done without, we've not hired, we've not given raises. We have been subsidizing the safety forces, rightfully so, because they're native services from the general fund, and we're at the point where we cannot do that any longer. Our city is suffering because we can't provide services. Building department, engineering department, code enforcement, everybody wants more and more of all that stuff, and we have no money to provide it.
Okay, so, I know we've hired some people in some of these general fund offices, like, um, see, IT?
We've only replaced...
Okay, I'm, I know, but still, replacing, but I guess, I, I mean, I, this is just kind of my thing, and I remember Mr. Stoughton and I spoke about it at the budget last, you know, about re- even reducing at the, the top, you know, but, I mean, you know, maybe, I don't know if we should be replacing people in some of these offices if this doesn't pass, because, do, I mean, do you see what I'm saying to, for the, that, I think that's what the public is...
Well, let me tell you some things. We just learned that all of the terminals in the police cars use Windows Seven. Microsoft is going to stop supporting Windows Seven in October, which means that they're all obsolete.
Okay.
It's going to cost thirty-five thousand dollars to fix that. We have had a grant, safer to school for two years, to build additional sidewalk on Sheeran Drive, and we have not been able to use that money, simply because we don't have the engineering capacity to do the design and supervision of that project. There are many other situations like that in city government. We can talk about building department and what it was like two years ago and what it's like now.
I remember.
They were operating in the nineteen seventies. We, we've got them up to the twenty-first century. We had to spend some money to do that. Many, many complaints about the building department. It was hampering development in the city, certainly over in your ward, so...
But I just think it's a fair, I, I think when the public hears, uh, we're going to lay off police and fire, which could be a reality if it doesn't, but I'm not going to vote for that, because I think there's got to be cutting some, I know we've, we've cut some, but, you know, to unmean your city, to me, is not the way to go. And I have two brothers who are Columbus police officers, and so, I, I, I know how important it is, but it's kind of like the school systems, you know, they want to pass a levy. It's busing, sports, and music. That's what they do. And, you know what, I'm just, I'm just a single mom. I'm just, you know, I pay taxes too. I might sit here, but I also pay taxes. And, and I think that kind of, if somebody kind of gives me a threat, I'm kind of like, my, my, I'm a, I mean, I'm just, I'll do the opposite. And I think that's what's going on here with the public, and that's their perception of things.
Well, it's a perception because a lot of people have sold things like bait and switch and fuzzy math, and it's not fuzzy math.
Well, I don't know that it isn't, like I say, a reality though, too, so...
How is IT funded?
IT fund is funded by the general fund, also from, uh, charges to the enterprise departments. Uh, every department that uses IT services, uh, provides, um, money to, uh, IT, and the enterprise departments and some of the special fund departments, um, get billed for what services they use from IT. We have to hire an auditing firm every three years to come in and pay them city money out of the general fund to verify that the formulas used to calculate the charges for IT to the enterprise departments and special fund departments is accurate, that we can't charge a penny more or a penny less than what they're entitled to.
So, basically, it's, it's in, it's effectively a special revenue fund.
It's effectively a special...
Because it is not a native, a hundred percent funded by the general fund. It, it gets a stipend from the general fund.
It gets a stipend from the general fund, right.
It's not funded solely by the general fund.
Correct.
Every department using resources, um, IT resources actually pays the IT department for those resources.
Correct. Thank you.
Mr., yes, Mr. Mal.
So, while we're bitching about stuff, the street department, it was mentioned, it was mentioned that the, the taking money away from the street department, when, once that the, uh, levy was passed, paved the streets. I think that, now that Mr. Stoughton was around then either, but I, I'm pretty sure we went ten or fifteen years without paving streets, because we could not afford to pave streets before that levy was passed. I don't know if you were, and the streets got really bad, and so, to say that this levy was passed five years ago, and somehow money got taken from the streets, streets was not paving, they weren't paving anything, because driving a, a fire truck or a medic in town, you knew, and now it's getting better, it's just taking time to get better. So, I, I don't think there's been a, a bait and switch in that situation either, in my opinion.
I wasn't around during that time, so I have no idea.
Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you. You are correct, Jack. Um, the, the city always, there was always paving going on in the city, because you have a lot of, uh, federally funded, state-funded, state route contracts where, you know, we, lot of federally funded, state-funded, state route contracts where, you know, we, they're coming to pave, you know, US Route Twenty-two or US Thirty-seven, or Thirty-three, back in the day when it ran through the city. It really wasn't the fact that we had an opportu, we had a choice. It's like, hey, City of Lancaster, you're going to pay somewhere between, the, the difference of, you know, twenty-four percent to nineteen percent, or five percent of that cost, and we really didn't have a choice. They were going to come through and pave, and the local match was effectively a dollar for every four they threw in there. Sometimes we got a better ratio than that. So the paving you saw was the paving really on the, on the, on, on the state highways. The other, you know, to say that, it's disingenuous to say that we took, you know, once the levy passed, oh, by the way, we can account for every levy dollar, and Cory can tell you that, Becky can tell you that, from the, from the street levy. The other, the other point to that is, is there wasn't money taken away from LDOT when that levy came through. LDOT's doing the very same things they've done before, which is constantly trying to maintain the, the streets that haven't been, that are in need of repair, that really haven't been repaved, but by the same token, in the, they're also actually taking care of some of the new paved streets as well, so we haven't taken a nickel from LDOT. So I don't, I don't want, that's not a true start, statement, it's not a true story, and you can go all the way back to where we sold the paving equipment, and that has everything to do about forced account limits and things, prevailing wage, and a whole bunch of other things that does not allow the city to get into the paving business, because our records are public, so any private company can come in here and undercut the city on its own paving projects based on the forced account limits and prevailing wage. So, not a true statement either. So, Jack, thanks for leading on that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mal. And thank you, Mr. Stotin.
Mr. President?
Yes, I saw Ms. Donahue, and then we'll start coming around this way.
So, just to clarify the numbers, how much does it cost for one medic?
Well, to, to add the fourth medic, it's going to cost one point three million dollars a year.
Okay.
It's twelve full-time firefighters, plus equipment and supplies.
So one point-
Three million.
Three million dollars. And to get one point three million dollars, how many city positions would you have to cut? There aren't enough, are there?
There aren't enough, that's right.
That is my point. There is not enough, there, we cannot cut city positions to make up the difference for one medic. You're still going to be in a deficit, regardless. If you cut these, you're still going to be on a deficit over here, right?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Yes, Mr. Schoonover?
Um, just to touch on, I mean, I don't think there's a single person in this room, and I'm glad everybody brought it up. I mean, no one wants to see cuts to police and fire, um, when we discuss unmanning the city. I mean, not just police and fire, I mean, we, one of the reasons I got on city council is like, why, what's, where's the money going, you know, and then I have the privilege of sitting on Public Works and seeing exactly where the money goes, and is it, are paving streets fast enough? Absolutely not. I mean, Ms. Bobbitt sat on that chair for, for years, and you want to talk about unmanning the city, we unmanned the street department down to the bone, so even if we still had our paving equipment, we're allowed to use it, we didn't have anyone to do it. So, you know, when we look at, I, I, I know that it comes across, and the optics were bad from the levy for November, and now what it looks like now, so the optics, we're not going to fix that, but, you know, when we sat and looked at the budget, the first round of the budget that we got for 2020, to what we approved, we cut out one point two million dollars to, to get there, and now unfortunately, with police and fire, that, it's not necessarily a threat, but when they have the largest chunk of the budget, it, I mean, that's kind of where you go with it. I mean, I, I've, one of my things where I ran was code enforcement, like, hey, we need to make that bigger. There are so many complaints that we get, and, you know, what's code enforcement doing? Where, where can we do this? I mean, we fought to the nail to get a part-time person put on there, so, you know, we, we've unmanned the city for years, street department, one of them, and I feel, I, I do feel like it, it's an optics thing, but the police and fire get a ton of that general fund budget, and it's really hard to want, it's really hard for us to sit here and cut them. And then when you try and cut everybody else, it's, I mean, it makes me, I mean, I, I lost sleep through, through the budget process. I know that some people think we sit up here and we're yes people around the table, and we're spinning through all of our legislation, like, man, they ran through, I mean, we spend a lot of time outside of this room, working on this stuff, so it's not where yes people, it's, it's, it's not, but, you know, what some people think it is, and there's some people sitting in the audience, I mean, Mr. Welker was on council before, I, I think you have to agree with a little bit of, of the work that goes into it. So I appreciate everything that we're trying to do, I appreciate everybody's comments, and I, it's, it's tough to decide what to do, and, and I don't know that cutting police and fire i- is really a threat, I mean, that's, you know, we cut, we could cut, okay, code enforcement, for example, what's their budget? Three hundred thousand dollars, if that?
I think it's that much.
Two, two seventy, so.
Okay, so we could eliminate code enforcement.
You could eliminate the law director's office, what is it, eight hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah. Just, just-
Just for the law director.
Nobody is prosecuted for it.
No, but I'm just trying-
Which, by the way, is mandated on us as the municipality to do that.
Right.
But just as an example, we can, if we eliminate code enforcement, then that's enough to, to hire three police or three fire back.
No.
Yeah, that's the problem, so, I, I mean, it's, it's difficult, it sucks, that's where we are with it.
Thank you, Mr. Schoonover. Are you going to speak to that?
Yeah, I'm going to speak to that.
Okay, and then I want to go to Mr. Hall.
He mentioned some things to unmanning the city. Ten years ago, we had four hundred and seventy employees, full-time equivalents, that dropped to about four hundred and thirty-seven, and that was maintained until about a year ago. And sure, there were some, some police and firemen cut, but engineering was cut, building department was cut, street department was cut, everybody was cut. And, I mean, these cuts have gone on and on for many years. Look, folks, I didn't ask for this job. I was recruited for it, I was convinced to take it. I don't have any ambition for further political office. I had no bucket list item to be an elected public official. I took this job because people thought I could make a difference. And I had forty years in the accounting profession, you know, I took a look at the numbers, and I'm telling it like it is. If, if we don't pass it, we're going to have more cuts that we're not going to like, and it's going to be back on the ballot again until we do pass it. Otherwise, the city is going to go down the tubes.
Yeah, well, thank you, I appreciate the summary.
Oh, well, one other thing I wanted to mention.
Go ahead.
City income tax, we estimate in 2020 that it will raise twenty million, seven hundred thousand dollars. Safety forces take nineteen million, two hundred thousand of that. Twenty million, seven hundred is what the income tax will bring in, safety forces gets nineteen million, two hundred thousand.
So there's not much left to cut. Right. And so I, I guess I would just quickly summarize it like this, and then, Mr. Hall, if you have something you want to say, you go ahead, and then I'll-
Okay, yeah, just real quickly, I, I, I want to say, as a former commuter, that I do have a degree of sympathy for those people that live in our city, that drive to Columbus, and pay taxes there, and then have to pay taxes here. But what I would say, and, and again, as a commuter, it aggravated me to no end. I wanted my taxes to go to Lancaster, and it seems to me that, that regardless of how this issue turns out, that we need to start looking at some legislative remedy. Essentially, those people that are commuting to Columbus or commuting elsewhere, it's taxation without representation. And, and we need to look for ways to get that particular part of this problem fixed, so that people that want to live here can have their taxes invested in their home community. And that's all I have to say.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Hall. I'm a commuter, there are several commuters around the table here, and I think we'd all agree with some of that sentiment. I think the flip side is, much like you and, and us now, we still want the police department in Lancaster to show up at our house, and we still want the fire department to show up at our house, and that, those cost dollars.
We, yeah, we have to support the levy, or the, the tax initiative, there's no doubt about that. But, but we also need to look for ways to make sure that our citizens aren't subject to double tax. It's a longer-term issue, and I just wanted to, to get that on the table as a potential body of work that we may want to consider as a, as a long-term issue, just, just as a matter of social justice.
Well, and, and if it were up to us, I think, you know, we could make that decision and move forward, right? We have, we have the ability to influence, but little authority in that.
No, no, exactly. We, we can't, we can't make a decision, but we can certainly look for opportunities to raise that issue and raise awareness of how unfair it is to communities our size that are in close proximity to large cities.
Sure.
May I ask the mayor a question?
Yeah, sure can.
So what does the Ohio Mayor's Alliance think of the, that situation where you pay, what, two and three-quarters, or two and a half to Columbus, and then you, you know, still pay back, even though you're getting a small tax credit from Lancaster, you're still paying?
Well, our city Senator Schaefer actually has a bill in legislature right now to address that. It's not going anywhere.
Sure.
It depends on what size city you are. The big cities, Columbus, Cincinnati, Cleveland, and other big city state, and Toledo, they are dead set against that, because I think Columbus gets fifty-seven percent of their revenue from commuters that are, live somewhere else and come there, so they don't want that to happen.
Yeah, they have no infrastructure problems in the big cities.
Exactly.
They have plenty of cash.
The city of Columbus increased their budget this year by six percent, because they have plenty of cash.
Let's put them in a position where they have to make decisions about their safety forces, not, not Lancaster. It's ridiculous.
I agree.
That's a legislative, that's a, that's a legislative-
It's a state legislative issue, but I agree with you.
It's the state law, as a matter of fact.
It's a state law, yes. But I think everyone agrees with you, Mr. Hall.
Don't disagree with you at all?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, again, many, many of us commuters would love to just pay what we, what we need to pay to Lancaster, and that be that. I, I think if we want to continue to work that way, we can. I, I guess I would just summarize, as we maybe think about wrapping this up and moving to, to a, a different topic, is that I think everyone around the table would agree that no one wants to pay more taxes, and Mr. Schoonover's summary was, was accurate. It does suck. The reality is, is there's nothing that I'm paying for, or nothing that you're paying for, that didn't cost more now than it cost last year or the previous year. So when we hear statements like nineteen some million of a twenty some million dollar budget goes to safety forces, when we come up out of money, then we're out of money, and the whole trim the fat thing is somewhat disingenuous, given the numbers we used to be at several years ago and the numbers we're at now. The fat has been trimmed, and this group spends significant amounts of time ensuring that that's the case, and, and as we go through that process, there's no one who wants to be sitting here right now talking about more taxes or cutting police and fire, but it is the reality we find ourselves in, and so I think that the conversation tonight was helped clarify a number of, of things. One that have been, been said that perhaps aren't exactly accurate, and two provided some information that may be helpful for citizens as they make their decisions. So I appreciate the conversation. Anyone else on this, before we move on to a different topic? All right, is there other unfinished business this evening that anyone would like to address? All right, is there any new business tonight that anyone would like to address? Ms. Teener?
Yeah, I do. Actually, it's about the Timbertop issue, but not like about, it's, it's about, I got a email. I love getting emails, like people calling me, I like that, I really do, I think it's passion on, on both sides with council and, and that, but I, I will say, the one petition that Teresa Sandy mentioned, I don't know which one that we all got, it had about five hundred people on it, and there were people from Virginia Beach, there were, you know, and, and I know we're passionate about it, but I like to keep, I mean, it's okay if somebody wants to sign a petition, there's no addresses on there. I know during the Roxton Ravine, they had a petition, I looked through those signatures, and it said, even on the wording, was Fair Avenue. There were people from Rushville, there were people that I saw sign for each other, but I just guess I was just kind of taken aback at that kind of a petition, because, and I, you know, I understand the issue, and I like people being passionate over this, and, and I feel bad for people. I mean, sometimes I feel like, you know, some of these people get so impassioned over it, I don't want anybody having a heart attack or a stroke over it. I mean, people get that upset over it, but to get a email of five hundred people that, I, half of them, I don't even know, and I don't think half of them even lived in Lancaster, I think that's kind of a little over the top, a little bit, and, and I just thought I'd put that out there. And I know, being on council, I, I looked at a picture of myself in 2013, and now, and I'm just fatter, grayer, and I don't get any sleep. So-
Really selling it there, Ms. Teener.
I'm telling you, and something I've realized, if you pay to go to Planet Fitness, you actually got to go to workout to lose the weight, just putting, taking your money out of the checking account.
Ten bucks a month is enough.
No, you actually got to go. But I don't have time, but I'm just saying, you know, I just don't want people getting so upset about this situation, because I, I worry about some of the older people, because it is a very hot topic, so, that's all I have to say.
I watch workout videos every morning, and so I sit there, nothing hap, it doesn't, I just sit there, nothing happens, it just ticks me off.
Like Suzanne Somers, or like-
Yeah, a little Suzanne Somers, yeah.
Richard Simmons?
No, 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 no Richard Simmons, no, no, no. All right, thank you for that, Ms. Teener. Is anyone else who has new business this evening? I'll just quickly mention a couple of things. First of all, we recently heard that former council member John Zeke has passed away, and our thoughts and prayers go to his family. Also, want to take this opportunity, I had sent each member of city council an email. We do have Mingle with the Mayor and City Council coming up on April twenty-third. This is a, an event that the young professionals of Lancaster have invited us to, and so I hope that if you're able to attend that, that you will do so, as, as we work to continue to connect with those who are, you know, residents and, and citizens of, of Lancaster. Also, want to quickly say congratulations to a number of city departments. The mayor sent this around, and the law director's pretty excited and proud of, of his award, but for the United Way banquet, a number of awards were given out to city departments and officials, including the auditor, law director, city administration, stormwater, police, fire, and municipal gas. These are people that are giving their dollars, their hard-earned dollars, to United Way to support the many, many organizations that United Way supports here in Fairfield County, and so congratulations to each one of those departments, and thanks for your continued support of so many great community, great community organizations. You're going to have to help me out, Mayor, and I don't know if she's still back there or not, but in finance, you had mentioned an award for Ms. Woody, if you would just mention that one more time?
Yes, Carrie Woody, the director of our Public Transit Authority, has been president of the Ohio Public Transit Association, which incidentally includes the transit systems, Columbus, Cleveland, Cincinnati, Toledo, Dayton, Youngstown, all the biggies, and she has been the president of that organization. She is going to be awarded their top honor at this year's annual meeting, the Leonard Ronus Award, which is to recognize her contribution to the transportation industry in Ohio.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to Ms. Woody, and, and that contribution is significant, taking what, what little bit of money she gets from the general fund and turning it into what she turns it into each year, and really leading the way in Ohio, in central Ohio in particular, from a transit standpoint. We appreciate, she's a huge asset to the city, so congratulations to Ms. Woody, and to all the staff over at Lancaster Public Transit. Is there any other new business this evening anyone would like to discuss? If not, we'll ask the clerk to read our upcoming scheduled meetings.
Upcoming meeting, March twenty-third, at six thirty PM here in council chambers. The meeting following is April thirteenth, at six thirty PM. At that meeting on the thirteenth of April, we'll have two public hearings on temporary ordinance four dash twenty and five dash twenty. Upcoming committee meetings for the next thirty days, Water Water Pollution Control, March eleventh, at eight AM at the Water Pollution Control Conference Room. Economic Development, March nineteenth, seven thirty AM at, sorry, tongue tie here, seven thirty AM at City Hall eighteen ninety-seven Conference Room. IT Telecom, March twentieth, at seven thirty AM, City Hall Conference, City Hall eighteen ninety-seven Conference Room. Finance meeting, March twenty-third, here in council chambers, at six PM. Safety, March twenty-fifth, at seven thirty AM in City Hall eighteen ninety-seven Conference Room. Service, April third, seven thirty AM, City Hall Conference Room, eighteen ninety-seven. Code Enforcement Zoning, April sixth, at eight AM, City Hall eighteen ninety-seven Conference Room. And finally, the Water Water Pollution Control, April eighth, at eight AM at the Water Pollution Control Conference Room.
Thank you very much. Are there any bills this evening?
There are none to be presented.
Is there need for an executive session? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn is in order?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second?
We have a motion in the second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all very much, have a great night.